We would like to call this special meeting to order. We do have a quorum, and I would begin with the item two on the agenda, which is the bond and tax election. Mr. Lachey?
I want to go ahead and make a motion that we rescind this resolution for the tax election to be held April 9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we rescind the call for the tax election, which was supposed to take place on April 9. Any questions or comments from any members of the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm too short. If you rescind this action, does that negate all of the notice bond commission and that whole procedure? Do you need to do that again if you have this on a later ballot? In other words, do you start over? Or by rescinding what you're doing for the April election, do you, does that, does your approval by the bond commission stay in force? Do you?
Mr. Guidry?
Not certain, but I do know that the resolution is specific to the election date. So that's something that we'd have to check with our bonding council on. But the resolution that was approved by the bond commission is for a specific.
Specific date, okay, that's what we need to know. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Thetis Kusamandu, I'm a resident of District 7. And I simply wanted to say that regardless of your decision tonight, I've been here through three school boards, starting from 2007, in this room, speaking to those boards. And I do want to commend you for your leadership and immediate planning and jumping on the facilities issue. You made that a campaign issue before the election, and you've absolutely kept to it straight. Hard work, and the facilities committee with the public process was really commendable. You've put an enormous amount of effort into this. You've jumped on the timelines in order to be prepared for this election schedule. And I do want to note that along with "this is not the right time," we also hear "we pay too many taxes." I want to say that Lafayette Parish, I found out last night, ranks 52nd in the state in its total mileage. And of course, a big part of that for every parish is its school system mileage. We want an A school district. We've been pressured heavily, teachers have been pressured heavily to perform at higher, in higher levels, and improve student schools' scores. But we are still in 20th century buildings decaying, and your cost will increase, your budget will be diminished, until we do have the capital improvements tax and support that we need. So I just simply want to keep it burning before the public, and thank you for your continuing to address this. Thank you.
And I'm sorry.
If you rescind this motion to bring the tax proposal before the public, how would this affect the plan that you had if we would have gotten the tax? How does this affect the building of Lafayette High School? I understand that in one part of the building at Lafayette High School, there's a wall that separates from the floor, and you can drop a paper through that second floor, and it'll fall on the first floor. I'm very concerned if that's a safety issue for our kids, and I want to make sure that, you know, there is something that will address that in the future. And the programs that the administration wanted to bring to our school system to help the children who fall under the achievement gap, and to help with the other programs that help prepare kids for college and stuff, you know, I'd like you all to explain to the public how that's going to affect all of that. And is it possible to have a maintenance tax on a ballot? Because our schools are falling apart, and we do need to do something. And I can't see the public not supporting that tax. I might be wrong, but, you know, we need to find some way to get those things taken care of. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from any members of the board? Mr. Centini?
Ms. Osmo, I wholeheartedly agree with you. And, you know, the need for this is not going to go away, just because if we repeal this resolution. It's, you know, some may disagree with the configuration of the tax proposal, but in the end of it, the proposal was designed to improve the quality of the classrooms, our school system, and the overall quality of life in Lafayette Parish. Unfortunately, since we voted to call the election in December, we have gotten bad news after bad news about the oil and gas sector, and the families of Lafayette are hurting in the process. And I think the last thing any member of this board wants to do is impact the families that are struggling to make it already. So, like I said, the need doesn't go away just because we repeal this. And I don't think anyone would argue that Lafayette High is in picture-perfect condition or is an adequate 21st century school. But nonetheless, I think the families of Lafayette Parish probably deserve a little bit of stability because when you, any organization, your family, your business, any kind of budget decision of this magnitude, you certainly don't want a bunch of uncertainty as to how much other aspects of your life are going to cost you. And right now, we don't know what's going to come down from the state of Louisiana as they work through their budget process. And to go and ask the average homeowner in Lafayette Parish to pay an additional $200 a year, despite the fact that I believe in their heart of hearts, they want to support us, I don't think it's the right time. So it's very unfortunate.
Mr. Lachey?
My point of view, we just want the public to know this is a step back, not a setback. It's not a defeat, it's not a victory. So many times, when you're in public service, whether you're labeled a public servant or a politician, the remarks are made that "we don't listen to the people, you don't listen to the public." I've tried to do that, we've done that. We're hearing what the public is saying with the economy, with their own finances. With just the uncertainty of, when is this all going to end? Please don't take this as a defeat, don't take it as a setback. We're just stepping back, and we'll bring this back another day.
Mr. Brouzard?
I agree with all whatever was said. And I guess all of us had emails for and against this tax proposal. We got one of them that said, "If we do not put it on the ballot, we're just kicking the can down the road." Well, that can has gotten to be a 55-gallon drum. And while we are recapping and trying to regenerate what we want to do, we want to keep in mind, and the public keep in mind, that our schools are getting old, and our population are growing. And somewhere down the line, when we bring this back, either in that form or another form, we would ask for the total support, because we are aware of the budget crisis that we're facing in the state and don't want to put an extra burden on the families here. Some will be struggling to pay their house note if they pay it at all. So I agree with Mr. Lachey, it's just, it's just a process we're going through. And next year, or the year after, the year after, whenever we put something back on the table, I wish that you would go back and say, "We need to support that because of the steps we're taking tonight to tighten our belt and do the best we can for what we've got."
Mr. Daggo?
Well, I do agree that these are troubling times. And I know that we have to be mindful of all constituents in this district and in this community. And I think we're going to do that tonight. But it can't be left unsaid that, you know, we as a board can sit up here and rescind this and, you know, make an attempt to look like heroes to the community. But the real heroes would, I think, possibly try to continue to push forward to make this school system, the school system that it deserves to be. I keep hearing that it's not the right time. And no one, no one has been able to tell me when the right time is going to be. I've said this a couple of times in the past couple of days, I'll say it again. I've never woken up in the morning, got in front of the mirror to brush my teeth, and said, "Today is a great day to pay higher taxes." I've never done that, and I don't think I ever will. But we know what condition our school system is in. At least, we here do. And I think it's our job to get it out to our constituents. I know that a large portion of the constituents in my district realize what they will be missing out on if we don't increase revenues. And we're not, we didn't put an item on the ballot. We're not imposing a tax on the people of Lafayette Parish with the item that we put on the ballot. We're asking the people of Lafayette Parish to make a decision if they are ready or not. And I think that we've listened to a minority. From what I'm hearing in my district, I think we've listened to a minority who share the opinion that we should postpone this. I do want to state again, so that it's not misreported, I do sympathize with the economy. I live in the same economy. I do sympathize with what's going on in this economy. And I do want to remind everyone also, who says that we need to get our academic affairs in order before we worry about facilities. We're a B school district. We are a great school district. Can we get better? Sure. Lastly, I just want to read a couple of lines from a couple of emails that I received today. One of the first one says, "As a new board, you have been given the task to do a lot more with a lot less in the midst of a crisis. As a committed citizen to world-class education, how can we support Lafayette Parish school system and maintain a business-friendly community?" The next one I'd like to read, just a brief part of, says, "You have no control over economic conditions." They change. You do have responsibility and can take action for Lafayette Parish Public Schools. The needs are clear. Waiting only costs the taxpayers more in the long term. Kicking the can down the road won't work anymore, and a six-month delay meets no children's or teacher's needs." That's my favorite line, by the way. I'm torn on this decision. I just, I just think everyone in my district deserves to know that I've been listening, and I know that many folks in my district realize what they're going to be losing out on without this opportunity for increased revenue. Thank you.
Any other comments from any other members of the board?
Mr. President, I'd just like some clarification. I look at the Resolution 02-161882, rescinds Resolution 11151875. And then we go down to the bottom. It mentions the $380 million general obligation bonds, but it does not mention the Proposition 2. So my question is, the motion to rescind Proposition 1 for the $380 million? Or is it to rescind both? And if it is to rescind both, then we don't have those documents on the agenda. And I guess that's to Dr. Aguilar.
I'm assuming that the motion is to rescind both, or I guess all three of them. Is that correct? Well, two propositions, but one of them has two taxes in it. Mr. Centini?
Mr. Kanasik, the resolution in question is attached to our, it's Item 5.12 on our December 2, 2015 meeting. And the resolution does contain the proposition language for both ballot items. So by approving the resolution tonight, which I think we will need to change our motion to approve the resolution that is on the agenda tonight, that resolution rescinds the resolution that has both propositions in it.
So it appears that even if we wanted to separate the two, that we are not going to be able to tonight because the previous resolution was one resolution that included both taxes.
Ms. Melv, if I could, I'd like to change my motion to approve Resolution 2-16-1882, which will in effect cancel the bond tax election. The new motion will be to accept, approve Resolution 2-16-1882.
And the maker of the second agrees? Any other questions or comments from any members of the board? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Morrison?
I just want to say, just in support of everyone's comments, that this is not going away. It's not a good time for us now, but in the future, we would like the community to support us with our facility needs and to help us move forward with our educational programs. The longer we wait, the further we are behind. I would hate to think that no time is a good time. So when things get better, our state gets back on its feet, and the economy is better, whether it's a year down the road, two years down the road, I'm hoping that the community support us with our educational system so that we could move forward. There's no way we could do it without you. So please support us. We want to support you and do what's right at this time. But in the future, I really hope that our community really support our educational systems the way they should because our community is for us. It's a part of us, it's who we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Eight for, none against.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is going to be presentations from three companies who purport to help us with our insurance. The first of which is going to be Arthur J. Gallagher and Company. I would respectfully request that you limit the presentation to around 15 minutes.
It's on now. Ryan?
Hello? My name is Zach Stafford. My name is Zach Stafford. Chris Bailey and I are benefit consultants with Arthur J. Gallagher. We are extremely pleased to be a part of this process. We know that this is a very important and difficult decision for the board to make. Our clients across the state are feeling the financial impact of the downturn in the oil and gas industry, which makes our job so much more important as the benefits that employers provide really affect the lives of many, many people. So you all had an opportunity to review all the RFPs in great detail. We're happy to be selected to talk today. So Chris just passed out a placemat, and that placemat's going to help facilitate this 15-minute conversation. You know, we have four goals for your organization. One, we want to provide great customer service. Two, we want to keep you in compliance. Three, we want to keep you informed and get information to you that is actionable and understandable. And four, we want to find ways to bend the cost curve. So as Chris passed out that packet, I just want to talk to you a little bit about Gallagher. Gallagher is the third-largest broker in the United States. We have over 22,000 employees and are traded publicly on the New York Stock Exchange. But what makes, what separates Gallagher here locally is that not only we are a large national presence, we have a huge presence in the state of Louisiana. We have over nine offices for employee benefits. We have 80 employee benefit employees. What makes us, separates us from our competitors is our corporate culture. Gallagher, Gallagher's corporate culture is one of teamwork, family, and integrity. If you flip over on your placemat on the back, you'll see some of the awards that Gallagher's won. We are, have been named since 2012 and again in 2015 by Ethisphere as one of the world's most ethical companies. In addition to that, we were 2015 on the Forbes list for America's Best Places to Work. We also won a J.D. Powers Award for Customer Satisfaction. And finally, last year, we were selected by Baton Rouge Business Report as one of the best places to work. So what we hope to do today is to talk to you about our experience with our clients, and then our retention rate of 96%. And if you look on the back, we have some quotes from some of our clients that kind of speak to that. Chris is going to take a few minutes to talk about your accounting, and then I'll come back and talk to you about our compliance.
Yeah, and we really want to hit on the highlights that you have in your RFP. You know, the questions that were posed to us, you know, and we gave our full response. You know, really, what we see in that RFP is five areas. So consulting, account management, wellness, underwriting, and compliance. So those are the five areas. I want to really just explain to you, who's going to be representing you, you know, in the future? So who are these people? Why should you select them? Zach and I, our job is to lead the strategic plan for your organization. So, you know, healthcare is too expensive today, we know that. But how do we get it down? Do we do it by changing networks? Do we, you know, do we cost shift to employees? Do we implement technology to, you know, assist us in enrollment and help migration to better choices? Help people make better choices, you know? How do we do those things? So what Zach and I are challenged with is helping you develop that strategic plan and lead the team to basically help you and your organization do that in the future. So what we've brought today is an actual survey that we put out on an annual basis that's real high-level, that says, "This is what people in the nation are doing." The survey we're handing you today is The survey we're handing you today is actually specific to K through twelve education, you know, school boards. So, what we want you to see is, you know, obviously, costs are an issue, but how are your peers dealing with these costs? You know, what are, what are they, you see, and what are we seeing in the market to help you really handle and eliminate or reduce those costs in the future? So, secondly, want to hit real high on your account management team. So your account management team will be directed by mainly two account executives. So it'll be Luanna Landry and Kim Breyard. Luanna Landry actually comes to us and has been with Gallagher for five years. She comes to us from a third-party administrator, actually the third-party administrator that handles your plan today. So she, she's tenured in the business, she knows self-funding. Kim Breyard has been in the consulting business for about eighteen years now. So those two people will be tasked with handling the day-to-day of your customer service. So, you know, somebody needs an ID card, they can't find a doctor, you know, developing, you know, whatever on-demand reports, working with underwriting for that. You know, whatever those issues are for you and your staff on a day-to-day basis, they are tasked with leading the team to manage the day-to-day. We have a wellness consultant that is your consultant full-time to help you develop your wellness plan, to move that forward into the future. So, you know, are you doing, you know, are you satisfied with what you have today? You know, what are our recommendations to change what you have in place today? It may be perfect, you may be happy with it. But we've worked with entities, you know, in Lake Charles recently to put together an onsite clinic for them, where they decided that, you know, that the wellness plan, the typical wellness plan wasn't working for them. So they decided to get into the primary care business. They thought that they can, you know, drive savings in the future by bringing primary care directly to their employees. So, you know, over a three-year trend, we've seen, you know, good things from that. So we're keeping people out of the ER. You know, people are really utilizing that clinic and taking, you know, care of themselves on a daily basis. But, you know, the downside of that is there's an expense to it. So, you know, we will bring you those options, and Carol, your consultant for wellness, will bring you that. Another case study that we did recently with the state of Louisiana is we utilized the money that we were paying their vendor in case management fees to actually hire case managers and have them onsite at the different offices managing their large claims. So their chronic conditions, helping people face-to-face manage their conditions on an ongoing basis. So really utilizing money that was already there to really ramp up that program. So, you know, those are a couple ideas of things we've done in the past. Andrew Malahousky is your, basically would be your compliance attorney. Zach's going to go into a little detail on Andrew, and, you know, what Andrew does for us and will do for you.
So, Andrew is a very talented guy. The only downside I have about Andrew is he went to Notre Dame, but for an LSU grad, that's a big deal. But Andrew and his team consist of six compliance attorneys and one paralegal. Everything that you do, every plan you put in place is touched by compliance. Chris mentioned wellness and Carol. So, you go, you guys have a wellness program, Carol comes up with an idea how to assist. Guess what? Compliance has got to weigh in on that. A perfect example. Andrew and his team were asked by one of our clients, they wanted to put in smoker and non-smoker rates. Okay, seems simple enough. Guess what? There's a lot of work that you have to do from a client standpoint to be able to do that. Andrew's team's going to review all your contracts. They're going to review eligibility. They can help with ACA reporting. And just day-to-day, all the day-to-day questions that your team has about what you can and can't do, that's what our compliance department's there for. Gallagher was a market leader in getting ready and ramped up for all this robust, complex environment that we're in today. Andrew's team is simple. They have to take that information, that complex information, to make it actionable.
So Ryan Westbrook would, will lead your actuarial team, your underwriting team. And he is tasked with the day-to-day deliverables with regards to reporting, helping you evaluate RFPs, the network game that you play with medical costs. So the game is for the doctors to send you a bill, and you discount that bill by a certain percentage, and then you pay it. How do you evaluate that between four different, the four different players in the market? So Ryan will help you look at that data apples-to-apples. We also have a proprietary program for pharmacy, and Zach will talk briefly to that and give you an example of what we're doing on pharmacy side.
So who actually knows the cost of a drug? It's very, very challenging, right? And so you hear the terms AWP, discount pricing. So Gallagher, as we continue to build a team to help bend the cost curve, hired a guy named Tom Tran as a regional resource that'll work for the school board as well. And Tom's role is to analyze contracts. He was the director for one of the bigger, director of pharmacy for one of the largest blue plans in the country. And so, just as a quick example, and I know we're short on time, is one of our clients noticed a spike in the drug trend, like we all are noticing, right? And initially, you would think that was specialty drugs. But it was the whole trend of the drugs. Drugs are running at a fourteen percent trend right now, they're driving medical spend. So together, Tom Tran and Ryan in the underwriting department got together, and we analyzed both the contracts on how these drugs were paid, and then, and had, used all that data to reprice, and then test that against other PBM vendors and save the client ten percent. Now, ten percent's a big deal now, because if you look at the drug spend, what used to be fifteen percent is now twenty-five, and can end up being thirty percent of your drug spend. And then, as these specialty drugs continue to come out, it's going to be driving more and more of your cost. So Gallagher really spends a lot of time on pharmacy.
So moving into implementation, you know, day one, we would work with your team, your staff, Mona and her staff, to figure out, you know, what are the urgency, you know, what are the projects, what are the urgency? How do we put the right people on those projects and move forward? The way we do this is really designing a performance plan for your group. So we'll come to a mutually agreed-upon plan, and we've put a twenty-five percent guarantee on the fees you're paying us that is strictly, hey, at the end of the year, if you don't feel we did a good job for the school system, we'll give you twenty-five percent of what you paid us back. So, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. You've given us the opportunity to earn your business, we want to earn your business. Any questions or anything, we'll be happy to answer.
We're going to reserve the questions until all three have given their presentation.
Yes, sir.
In other words, don't leave. I thank you guys very much, not only for the presentation, but for the timely manner in which you delivered it. Thank you. McGriff, is it Siebles and Williams? Will be our next presenters. If you wish, you can, those mics are wireless. If you want, if you want to, or if you need to, you could take them out of the stand. We want to welcome you all here, and I want to, like we reminded the other team, the other group, please restrict your presentation to about fifteen minutes, we'd appreciate it. You're on.
Perfect. Thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We're very excited. The weather made it even more exciting today, coming over. But we'll take just a few minutes of your time. We know that you've probably reviewed, my best guess is about four-hundred-and-fifty pages of documents from the three finalists, and so we promise not to document you or PowerPoint sheet to death. So one of the things that we're not going to do is, we're not going to go with, we're bigger, we're better, none of the adjectives that you hear, because none of that really means anything. The three finalists you have are all qualified in much the same way. But we want to give you some information, we think will help you make this decision. It's a big decision, it's a fifty-million-dollar decision. And the question I would be asking myself if I were in your seat is, why McGriff? And we feel like that answer is simple. It's because in everything that we do, everything that we do, we challenge the status quo. How do we do that? Well, we develop programs and filters that we can apply to any health plan, anywhere, anytime. And those filters are things like claim audits for hospital claims over twenty thousand dollars. We're going to talk about that briefly in a minute. We talk about never events. And never events were adopted by Medicare eight years ago not to pay for medical errors, and yet your plan document today doesn't have that. And we talk about pharmacy management. And we talk about it in a way that it is audited, so that we can find the pieces and parts of your pharmacy plan that don't affect any employees, but yet are overpays or errors. We want to help you develop a culture of employees who feel like they're your customers, who want to stay here, who don't want to move. We know that turnover in most schools is an issue. And we want to help you drive your costs down by helping you develop a healthier culture, where people can get to the resources that they need, and where folks can feel like that they're part of something bigger than themselves. And so what we're going to do, rather than tell you about us, we've already submitted that, and we have a leave-behind for you, is we're going to put ourselves in your shoes. We think that there are probably seven or eight questions that should have been asked on the RFP to really help you make this decision. And we're going to ask those questions of ourselves and give you the answers we think you need to know to make this decision.
How will you provide value to our employees?
So, we believe in the three Cs. First of all, your employees have to understand their benefits, they have to comprehend their benefits. Secondly, they have to be connected to their providers. If they have a specific illness or need to see a specialist, they may need an advocate that helps them walk through the health system today, which is not simple. And lastly, we want to close gaps in care. And gaps in care mean that for your population, you probably have about twelve-hundred employees who have a diagnosis, but are not getting the proper care. They're either not taking their medication, they're either not seeing a specialist. They have a child who has a diagnosis and may not have followed up on a routine visit. And two things happen when there's a gap in care. Number one, you have an employee who may not be at their best, and who may be falling behind in their productivity. And just as important, you have an employee who may be a time bomb. And that medication that they may not be taking, that doctor visit that they may not be making, means that that could be a much larger claim down the road that's going to impact your plan.
What is your strategy for employee advocacy?
So we know that employees have a lot of questions. And we know a lot of those questions come into your HR department and into your benefit management area. And so one of the things that has been a really great success for all of the clients is having a dedicated email address, because questions don't come up between eight and five all the time. Sometimes it's Saturday, sometimes it's night. So we would provide a dedicated email address, and we chose LafayetteBenefits@McGriff.com. And simply, that would be a secure email, so someone on a Saturday could say, "I'm looking for a pediatrician, and this is my area, can you give me a hand? I need another ID card. Does my plan cover this?" And that would come to a dedicated account manager. And we use the word dedicated a couple times on this slide. And the reason we do is because we didn't just grab a bunch of people and bring them here tonight. These are actually the people that will be working on your account. Alex is a senior client manager in the office. Edward is the actuarial chief for McGriff. He runs all the numbers and looks at all of our reports. Alyssa is our client advocate, she's on the front line of everything that happens when it comes from your people. And April is our health and wellness guru to help us build a healthier culture.
Do we get to keep Blue Cross?
So, it turns out, we were here three years ago. And we know that there's some history and maybe some apprehension about our agenda versus what's important to you. And so we want to put that to rest. Our job is to go to market on your behalf and provide a list of opportunities, whether it's carriers or TPAs, whoever it is. And then make a recommendation, but it's your job to decide who you want to work with. Whether it's any of the major carriers, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, whether you want to go, we don't care. All of the tools and pieces we have will work with anyone. We don't have a bias against anyone. In fact, Edward can talk about his relationship with Blue Cross.
Thank you. As the actuary on your plan, what my role primarily will be, will help, will be to help you understand what your best choices are for the benefits you decide on, what the drivers are behind your claims, and what you can help do to alleviate some of the issues you're seeing there, such as with large claims or overutilization. And then certainly at the time of the next year, when you're deciding on what your rates are going to look like, my team will be handling all the underwriting services in that regard, in terms of projecting what your claims will look like, helping you understand your administrative expenses. I spent about half my career in the Blues system at Blue Cross Blue Shield in North Carolina, so I understand very intimately how a Blues plan works. In fact, I was very fortunate, a couple of the actuaries I worked with at North Carolina are now at the Louisiana plan. Some people that I still keep in touch with, so we got a little bit of insight there. And what we're trying to do is if you decide to keep Blue Cross, which I think that's important to you from what you guys have indicated, is to help you maintain and even enhance that relationship to the betterment of your plan.
What reporting can you provide?
One of the things you guys indicated in your RFP was that you were very interested in some of the reporting requirements that the winner of the bid would be able to provide. There are other actuaries in my shop that handle post-retirement medical valuations for large public entities, including Gatsby and FAS-type requirements. So we can handle that, the technical, the legislative side of reporting. In addition, we've got a couple of different tools that we can use to help you guys look at what your long-term plan might look like over the course of the next three or four years, including modeling out what your claims and experience could look like if you make certain decisions today or in the next year, and how that might look two or three years down the road. With a fifty-million-dollar spend, that is something you definitely probably want to consider. I'm sure it's one of the top one or two liabilities on your budget sheet. And then lastly, month-to-month, we have the capability of demonstrating to you, here's what we thought your claims were going to look like, here's what we thought your expenses are going to look like, and here's how you're tracking in that fiscal year. So when it comes to the full time, any surprise, or any adverse experience, or any positive experience, any surplus, you guys are well aware of what that looks like, so we can help you understand what it means and what you can do about it.
Beyond the RFP.
So you may wonder why we have third- and fourth-grade teachers up there on the screen. Well, in my work with school systems across the country, this is when standardized testing starts taking place. So, we've noticed an uptick in job-related stress at that grade level. So we have a program that can help address this population, help give them real-time, real coping skills they can use in the classroom to help them, you know, better address the needs of the students and their own needs as well.
One of the things we think is really important in school systems, whether it's high school, college, or any school system, is baseline concussion testing. And in our fee, one of the things we've included is baseline concussion, concussion testing for all of your high school athletes. That also includes a hundred-and-fifty post-concussion tests to measure. It's important, especially at the high school level, because kids are feeling- It's important, especially at the high school level, because kids are feeling good, they want to play, they want to go in, and the information may not be communicated correctly on the sideline or in the side court. But one of the things we do know is that if we can get a baseline concussion test on every high school athlete here, it'll be much easier to find out whether or not they're fit to continue play for their own personal safety.
One of the things that we do recognize is how important it is to keep our kids focused in our classrooms. When our kids spend time focused on basic necessities such as, basic necessities such as how they're going to get their next meal, we want to step in, and that's why we advocate for the program Backpacks to Hope. And that program provides three meals. They're for dinner, three hot meals, and then two lunches. And they're given in a backpack to hide them from, I guess disgrace is the best way to say that. And they're sent home every weekend so that these kids don't have to worry about what they're going to handle, what meal they're going to get over the weekend, and they're returned every Monday. And this is a program that we feel would help to keep kids focused in the classroom and maybe take some stress away from that.
In speaking with a lot of teachers, in doing research, and in looking at national surveys by the Department of Education, one of the largest needs that teachers have is classroom supplies. And a lot of the teachers ask parents, "Hey, can you bring some extra, you know, brown sacks or pencils and crayons and things of that nature?" And the national survey shows that teachers actually spend up to $1,000 of their own money to purchase classroom supplies. So we think we found a way that we can help with that burden. We can partner and co-sponsor raffles with Office Depot and Office Max so that $1,000 worth of classroom supplies is actually going to be given to the most deserving classroom as often as you'd like to have the raffles. We feel that if we can take that burden off of the teachers, then they can focus on what's most important, the children.
So, we sat through the budget meeting earlier, and we know this is a difficult time. It's a difficult time in the economy and it's a difficult time in the budget. And part of your challenge is trying to maintain your growth, maintain the level of education for the students. So one of the things we think is most important are the specifics on how we control cost. We have a program called Teladoc which allows your employees to call an 800 number and talk to a board-certified ER physician and talk about claims that maybe don't belong in the emergency room, whether it's a sinus infection or a cold, so that that employee can get a prescription either on their way to work or get a prescription by calling in and just going to the pharmacy and then staying home instead of spending four or five hours in an emergency room or two or three hours in an urgent care clinic. Our studies show that about 40% of all of those ER and urgent care claims can actually be handled by telephone. Never events, if you're not familiar, is what Medicare provided about eight years ago. And essentially what Medicare said is, "Look, if you're Medicare-eligible and you go in to have a hip replaced, and while you're in the hospital, you get a staph infection, we are going to pay for that hip replacement, but we're not going to pay for that staph infection because that's a medical error." And the initial thought was, maybe the patient would be balanced billed for that, but since it's an admission of malpractice, no patient has ever received a balanced bill on a Medicare claim that included never events. Never events, whether you hire us or not, should be in your plan documents so that you're not paying for medical errors. An eligibility audit is something that can be handled down the road, but the most important thing on this slide are bill audits and reviews. We think there's about a 3% error rate on your bills by the best TPA, and Blue Cross does a fine job. We still have, in our experience, found 3% of errors in that. We've got two minutes, so we need to wrap it up. These are case studies. They're going to be passed out to you in the leave behind. This is an example of the kind of work that we've done. On the least of our case studies, our average is a total of about 9% savings. That's without changing a plan, without changing a carrier, without any employee paying more out of their pocket. Let's go to the one more slide. And this is it. In a nutshell, we think that we can find 9% in your current plan, in your current carrier, with your current plan design. There are people that'll tell you that plan design is everything. Unless you're finding money in your plan, all plan design does is it shifts cost to employees. It's not a way to manage your cost. It's a way to spread the cost to other people. We think there's a better way. We can prove it. We're asking you to help us help you challenge the status quo. It's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to wait till the, all three presentations are made, and then if we have any questions, we'll ask them at that time. Thank you. Make sure that your mic is on, that little green light should be on.
Thank you very much.
We're going to respectfully request that you keep the presentation to about 15 minutes.
Sure, well, I'll go ahead and get started while Kevin's passing that out. But, good evening. As a product of the Lafayette Parish School System, a graduate of Ove Como High School, and current resident of Lafayette Parish, it is truly an honor and a privilege to be a part of this process and ultimately provide Lafayette Parish School System with guidance and strategy and innovative ideas to help you all manage your health plan and control your cost. My name's Mark Fontenot. I am an Employee Benefits Specialist with Hub International and Vice President of the Employee Benefits Division here in Lafayette. Your RFP that we all responded to stated that the purpose of this process was to find the most qualified consultant consulting firm to help Lafayette Parish School System manage your health plan, address the rising costs associated with healthcare, and to find innovative approaches to controlling those costs. So this evening, we'll introduce you to our team of experts that have decades of experience in the public sector advising and serving not only public entities but as well as three other Louisiana Parish School Boards. In the next few minutes, we'll demonstrate to you how and why our people are the right fit to help you meet your objectives. Before we get started, before we get into the team introductions, let me share with you and introduce you to a little bit about Hub International. We are one of the 10 largest brokers in the United States, but locally, we are the largest employee benefit consulting firm in this region. We have over 200 dedicated employees just to employ benefits. We serve over 2,300 clients in this region, 250 of those being in the public sector, which is very important to you. You mentioned that in your RFP, that that was a specific focus of yours, was to find folks that dealt not only in the public sector but also specifically with other school boards. And we have three currently under management as well. We have a 98% client retention rate, and of those school boards that we've mentioned, we have 100% retention rate, which dates back to 1990. So those are impressive stats. But what's most impressive about Hub International is our people, our culture, and our business process. That has been a cherished resource to our clients, and we'll share that with you here in just a second. I'll turn it over to Kevin Gardner now, our Employee Benefit Practice Leader, to introduce you to our team and the resources that we bring to support you.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, everybody, and thank you again for having us here. I think everyone that you will be interviewing today, the other two firms and ourselves, are all really good firms. I think the goal that hopefully we can relay to you today is what makes us unique, and our expertise within the public sector, our expertise within school systems, and the unique aspects and challenges that you have to deal with, our experience in knowing how to manage that. Mark talked about the people. My responsibility and my role is to make sure that the resources that we provide in Louisiana to our teams are going to deliver back to you the complicated marketplace that we have and address the challenges that we have. In the page that you have in front of you, it goes through some of the dynamics that are different today than when we all started in the business many years ago. You think back, years ago, insurance was fairly simple. You had deductibles, you had coinsurances, you had the amount an employee had to pay. It was pretty simple. With the advent of managed care, the introduction of ACA, with healthcare reform, our marketplace has become very challenging. Just in the list of puzzle items on here, you can see some of the items that have probably been brought to your attention over time that we have to focus on daily. These items can't be handled and managed by any one particular individual. And what we feel is unique to us is our team approach in managing these challenges. The team that we have put together for the school board and for the school system here is led by Len Fontaine. And Len is going to spend the majority of time talking for the next 15 minutes about how our team is set up and the resources that they have. We're set up in such a way that if you look in the very bottom, we talk about the additional resources that are provided to our team. When I started in the business, very few times would we need to contact an ERISA attorney. Today, we're dealing with an ERISA attorney on a daily basis. Jack McStravic is here, and I'll have him spend a few words as far as his responsibilities.
Great. Good evening. I'm Jack McStravic. I'm the practice leader for compliance resources for our clients. I'm a licensed attorney. And when the ACA was passed in 2010, it turned our industry on its ear. The ACA has put in burdens that compel employers to change designs, incur taxes, and pay fees, and make other changes to the plan, other mandates that they're required to implement with regard to eligibility. We offer a full suite of services that range from one-on-one consulting, your client that would be very important to us, we will provide you the one-on-one consulting, not only to your staff but to the board as well. We also provide tools that help in the decision-making process. With regard to the decision-making tools that we offer to our clients, they deal with several key issues. For example, in the school districts that I consult with, a lot of them are dealing with eligibility issues. They're having to deal with people who are PRDM employees or people who are on-call or substitute teachers. They're also dealing with eligibility of coaches and whether a coach might be eligible for coverage because they're working more than 30 hours, which is what the requirement is. And then a particular rule that applies to educational institutions is the rehire rule. When someone's gone for 26 weeks, they're able to reinstate themselves and have health insurance coverage upon their return. So we deal with all these issues. And particularly important on the horizon is the Cadillac tax, which impacts all employers but particularly otherwise generous school district health plans. And there could be an excise tax that will be coming in 2020. And we'll help you model that and help you fly under the radar so that you can avoid that. I'll turn it over to Wendy King.
And again, I'm going to introduce Wendy. And all these things that we're talking about today, these are not handled on a national basis. All of our folks are local because healthcare and the delivery of healthcare is local. So we feel it's important to have these resources here in Louisiana. Wendy King heads up our Wellness Division. I know you all have a wellness program that's through Blue Cross. Wendy will spend a second talking about that.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Wendy King. I run the Health and Performance Division for Hub Gulf South. So I run a team of four of us that work together to counsel clients on maintaining the health of your employees. Our only goal in our division is to work with you specifically, to consult with you and advise you on compliant and engaging ways to keep your population healthy. We do that through a multi-year strategy that Len is going to discuss in more detail, but the management and the health and an improvement of your employees is something that we consult with you every year. It's on our radar. We want to make sure it stays on your radar. We understand that your Be Well program is in place. It's a fantastic program, and I've actually had a little bit of time to review that. And what we can help you with is to evolve that program and innovate that program over time so that we're ensuring that your folks are actually helping to maintain good health and improve good health over time so that that impacts your health plan costs in a positive way.
Good. Thank you, Wendy. The most important person, last to introduce, is Len. Len is the quarterback on the team. Len is the person who would be managing your case if we were lucky enough to work with you. He's the one who has the experience and background in the public sector. So Len.
Thank you, Kevin. Len Fontaine. Thank you. Len Fontaine, I've had the privilege of being in this business for 32 years and representing school districts for 26 of that 32. We currently, as Mark mentioned, represent St. Tammany, Ascension, and Terrebonne Parish School Districts and have been doing that for quite some time. Ms. Brooke Brunet, who's sitting behind Kevin, would be your account manager if we were blessed with your business, and she works on all three of those cases. Mark touched on it, but I'll tell you, in your RFP, your stated purpose of the Request for Proposal was to develop a strategic plan, address costs, and identify approaches and options to control costs. I'm confident that with our experience, our team, our resources, we can do just that, assist you in developing that plan, implement it, manage it. That all gets started with an in-depth analysis of your plans, processes, getting to know your staff, who does what, and most importantly, getting a good idea of your philosophy around your benefit plan and your culture. We review a 10-year historical information and data on your case to identify what's driving your costs, and more importantly, to look for ways to bend that cost curve. We'll look at different things like your enrollment and touching on things that are in other school districts that have caused increases in cost. As we've talked about the Affordable Care Act and knowing that what's going on in the community all across Louisiana with oil and gas being on the downturn, we know how you fund it. We know your budget constraints of a school district and that type of situation. What we look for are ways to bend the cost curve without having mutiny on the bounty with your employees and your retirees. Where can we get the most bang for the buck without having to strip the benefits or increase the premium substantially? That's the delicate balance that we've dealt with for 26 years with school districts. Knowing and looking at the information in your RFP, when you're talking about a $44, $45 million a year expense, if we find in this puzzle that goes across this placemat, if we find a percent here, a half a percent there, and all of these different aspects, it doesn't, a percent in your plan is $450,000. So, in looking at all of these different things, we can find ways to curb the costs without having to strip the benefits, without having to raise premiums significantly. We look at your things like enrollment. Are you now becoming the... Three minutes? Okay, I'll speed up. We look at things like your enrollment. Are you covering more membership than you were in the past? Deep dive into your medical claims, very deep dive into your prescription drugs. 51% of your claims right now are coming from two entities, Lafayette General and Lord's. Are there ways to increase those discounts with those providers? Are there ways to increase partnership with them? Can we do a diabetes program? Things like that. When we look at your prescription drugs, I'll tell you, 35% of the cost of this $45 million a year plan is coming from prescription drugs. Your medical claims have looked to be flat in the last couple of years. Prescription drugs went up 20%. With the proper reporting and the proper research using our pharmacy consultant, we can look at your contract, we can look at your benefits, we can look at your claims, and look for ways to take that 20% and bring it back flat. and look for ways to take that 20% and bring it back flat. And it doesn't have to come from stripping benefits and increasing premiums. Other things that I'll touch on after we've done the analysis, we sit down with you guys, get your input, your feedback, formulate that multi-year plan. You're going to see a sample of it on the back, okay? Where, one, two, three years, some of the things that we're doing, and incorporate that with a timeline. With that being said, the things that you'll know is, number one, you'll know where your plan is; number two, you'll have a strategic plan for where it's heading; and number three, you'll have the satisfaction of knowing that your administration, your staff, your employees and your retirees are well-served. Couple other things that we want to touch on. In our experience with handling school districts, we know the timelines that you're dealing with, we know that we've got to go to committee and then board for different decisions. We get started in the renewal process six months ahead on the school board. We take a strong look at your reinsurance and your administrative contracts, want to make sure that you're not paying a dime more for administration than you need to. Same thing with your reinsurance. We're very aggressive in the marketing. We cover the market completely. We negotiate, we renegotiate, we renegotiate to make certain that you're paying the lowest premium for those services. I did notice that your premium keeps going up a bit on reinsurance, but they've hardly paid any claims. So we look for ways to bring in some cost savings on that, negotiate with all of your different aspects of the plan to make certain that we're maximizing the coverage, minimizing the cost.
That's perfect. Thank you all very much. We appreciate the time you spent with us and allowed us to speak to you today. Hopefully, from the RFP that we released and also the information provided on here, you can understand a little bit of the history that we've had with government entities and school districts, but certainly the ability to manage those plans appropriately. But thank you very much for the time.
Thank you all. We'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll ask them all to come back. And if we have any questions, we'll ask them at that time.
I want to, first of all, I want to thank the presenters. You know, all of you said one thing that was common and it was impressive. And what you said was that all three of you were good companies. So you all said that about each other, so I think that's a good, I think that's a good thing. I think it's heartening to know that you have a lot of respect for your competitors, if you will, or your colleagues, depending on how you put it. With that, I'll recognize Mr. Hidalgo.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the board select a health plan consulting firm from the three finalists who presented to the board previously at this meeting, and that the chosen firm begin working with Lafayette Parish School System effective immediately.
Second?
Okay, Eric, Mr. Kanesic, second? Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. We all have a sheet of paper. I'd like for you to put, not now, we're going to have discussion, but write down the name of the firm that you would like to see working for us. And we thought about a one or two or a three, but write down the name of the firm you think would best serve us. Before we vote, though, I'm going to ask if there's any comment, public comment from any members of the audience, or question.
I have a question to go back to the beginning, how we got here tonight. There was a committee appointed by the board, public body, part school board members, part employees, and those six people rated, and there was a rating sheet, and people were identified voter one through six. And I think this is the sheet you all had in your agenda packets. The question I have is who goes with what voter? Not all of the individual rating sheets are available as public documents. A couple of people just mailed in their totals, but they mailed them in with their names on the email, so it's clear who they voted for. Mr. Santini emailed his, but with all the individual rating sheets by company. But three people, Tommy just told me who he voted for, so I know who he is. But I'm trying to find out who voter three and voter six were. Because I have a problem with the anonymity in something that's this important and significant, especially dollar-wise and people-wise. So voter three... No, Justin...
I actually did not email one. I tweeted the winner on. What happened?
Well, your name was on every sheet.
I regret, but I signed every sheet.
Yes.
For this very reason. Because I knew Ms. Mounts was going to come, and I wanted to make sure that I did my homework correctly.
And Ms. Mounts appreciates it very much, Justin. I take back what I said about your English teacher and your math point. But Carol and Matt emailed theirs, Justin signed his, but those three names were there. Tommy just told me who his was. So I'm trying to find out who voter three and voter six are. If somebody could tell me that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Hidalgo, I think you had a...
Yes, I'd like to, I guess, briefly address it. Maybe Ms. Bernard can expand on it, but there's a reason that it says voter one and not Tommy, and voter two and not Justin. That was done intentionally, as it's done in many committee meetings when it's these types of arrangements. So there's a reason it was done that way. Now, I commend Mr. Angel for, you know, if he wants to tell the world how he voted, that's fine.
I told her I thought that I voted.
Right. But we voted, you know, individually and submitted them, and the scores came out as a committee. And I don't know if Ms. Bernard may want to elaborate on that.
I've spoken with Ms. Bernard, and I have her email that some committee members wanted to remain anonymous. I think some just forgot to put their names or didn't think they needed to put their names. But, so you're telling me that it's acceptable to vote anonymously on rating these insurance companies? Mr. Hidalgo?
My understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have some information for you. We proceeded to go ahead and check on the companies. We looked up, and this is for Mr. Santini, because he said I'd do my homework, and I did. The parishes that they work with, and we got some basic numbers of, you know, what the board pays, what the employee pays, and the total cost, the deductible, from the information that we gathered in August about the different parishes and the programs that they had in the parishes. I just made a copy of this for you to review, you know, to see what they did. When I called the parishes, and I did call all of them, you know, everybody is satisfied with their consultant. So, you know, we got very positive feedback about everything. The three parishes that are self-insured, Ascension, St. Tammany, and Terrebonne had a lot of praise. Assumption Parish, they're insured with the Office of Group Benefits. And when we asked, you know, what companies, or what, we asked what parishes the companies serve, the only parish we were told was Assumption for Gallagher. And we found out in their handout, they also serve La Fouches, Orleans, and St. Martin. And La Fouches is a self-funded parish. We did find that out. So I will correct that sheet and send it to you if you really want it later. But this is just information that we went through, what we gathered, reaffirmed this with the parishes. And I will tell you, Ascension Parish, when we gathered the information in August, were with United Health. They have since switched as of February 1st to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they did it through their consultant. So I just wanted you to have this information to say we're following up on our homework. And thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. Do we have any questions or comments from any members of our board? Mr. Santini?
I personally feel like we should wait at least a week before we vote. We have a tremendous amount of information that was given to us tonight, including what Ms. Sonnier just shared. And I personally would like to take another week to make a couple of phone calls, but, you know, I certainly understand if that's not the wishes of the board.
Mr. Hidalgo, you want to?
I want to ask Ms. Bernard if she would come up. Just answer, well, not answer, a couple of questions, just explain a couple of things, just general details. We, as a committee, met and course scored the RFPs that were submitted. If you can just kind of explain how that worked, just out of respect for the work of the committee, because they did meet, and each committee member spent several hours reviewing the RFPs and scoring them, and then came out with, of course, their final scores. And I'd like for you to just kind of explain briefly the process publicly. So I know you did at the committee meeting, but if you could just maybe just reiterate how the process fell, and of course, how the results fell, just so the public will understand how we came to, where we came to as a committee.
First, we asked that each company, and there were 10, submit a set of binders with their proposals in them, but not their company's name, so that it was completely anonymous for our panel members. As they reviewed them and scored them, they did so not knowing who the parties were. They also used a rubric or evaluation sheet that the board developed that actually was very specific to indicate that there was evidence of each of the scopes of business that we, of work that we asked the companies to do. And so we felt that was very objective. And once they turned in the score sheets, we ranked them. I compiled the data, and we chose the top three scorers to come to you tonight. At that point, of course, and I was able to share who they were, once we identified, once the scores were all in. Is there anything else I should add, Mr. Hidalgo?
No, I think that was fine. I just wanted to, everyone to understand that this was a very, as it was outlined by the board, and as it was decided by the board previously, it was a very, you know, subjective process. The, you know, all of these applicants were scored based upon the information that they submitted. And it was a lot of information from all of them. So I just wanted everyone to understand that this process was set up to score all applicants, and we had 10, and come out with an answer, as opposed to postponing and postponing. Because we're already a month beyond where we said we would be in the RFP. But you explain that well. Thank you.
One second, Mr. Druck. I wasn't quick enough, I'm sorry. Does waiting two weeks impact us?
It won't hurt us, no.
I mean, I get it, it's not, I get it, it's not tomorrow, but, I mean, okay. I'm just, I was just curious. I, Mr. President, I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we...
I was going to suggest that you do that.
That the board, I was trying to, I'm trying to make sure that I'm not going to impact anybody in getting their job done before I, before we do that, but that the board select a health plan consulting firm from the three finalists who presented to the board at this meeting on March 9th.
We have a motion that we delay voting on who we want to serve as our health planner until March 9th meeting? And you have a sec, we have a second, about Mr. Bruce Hart?
Yes, I certainly appreciate the work of the committee done, but this is most of, most of us, most of the first time seeing this and hearing that. And out of respect to all three vendors, I would, that's why I second that motion.
Any other discussion on this motion, which is the substitute motion? And if there's none, I'm going to ask that we vote on the substitute motion. And the motion is to delay the selection of the health plan consulting firm until the March 9th meeting. I wanted to, since as eight of us, I'm going to abstain. That way, there won't be a tie. There would be, in no way can there be a tie. And the motion fails. We will now, am I correct, Madam Secretary? Now we'll vote on the original motion. And I will ask that you write down the name of the consulting firm you would like to see represent us.
Mr. Angel, can we ask questions of the vendors?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. We're going to allow any of us to ask any questions you have of the vendors. You have a question, Mr. Kanesic?
My question for all the vendors is to explain what your local office presence is today and what it would be if awarded the project. As far as employees go, where, do your employees live in Lafayette, Lake Charles, New Orleans, Atlanta, the ones serving the contract? And if you could just, one of you answer per company, that would be great.
You can come up to the mic here.
For McGriff, Siebels, and Williams, all of the people that you saw here today are in New Orleans, and they will be the people responsible for managing your account.
Arthur J. Gallagher, we have five employees here in Lafayette. Zach and I both work out of the Baton Rouge office, and the majority of your team lead will be out of the Baton Rouge office. So you have 12 employees on those two combined teams, and then the employees here is backup.
Our office here in Lafayette has about 35 employees. About 30% of those folks are dedicated to employee benefits. Your team lead consultant will be Lynn Fontaine, who's based in Homa. Brooke is also based in Homa across the state. All those 200 employees that I referenced in our presentation are local employee benefit consultants in the state.
Any other questions, members of the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Santini?
For each of your fees, will any of that be dependent on the number of lives enrolled in our, in our healthcare plan? Or will any percentage of it be on an annual basis, all of it on an annual basis? Do any of you have any sister companies that provide any of the services that we may be requesting, such as pharmacy? I know one of you mentioned, maybe not a pharmacy benefit, but a pharmacy, some kind of pharmacy company. Any TPAs, benefit providers, anything like that?
No, we don't own any of the ancillary services that you're talking about.
Sure.
So in speaking with a school board member in Vermillion Parish, she tells me a story, and I'll grant you, this may be highly anecdotal, but tells me a story of an employee of the Vermillion Parish School Board going to the hospital at, maybe Lafayette General or Lord's or somewhere like that. And the doctor in the emergency room sees the patient and says, tell you what you need to do is you need to go, you need to not come here, you need to go down the street to this, to this clinic, which is out of network and, you know, naturally charges a much higher price. Several of you mentioned finding, maybe not fraud, but billing errors and things of that nature. What can you do, what kind of data can you provide on a regular basis to help us find instances where we aren't getting, where employees, through no fault of their own, through bad medical advice, are not going to providers in whatever networks we have or getting their services at the best provided rate?
For McGriff, one of the things we utilize is a platform called Medical Intelligence, which is supported by Veris Health. And what it allows us to do is look at a very granular level at every single member and what their claims are, where they go, what providers they're using, and what services they're using, and search for exactly what you just asked about. Are they going out of network when they could be going into network? Are they going to an ER when there's a local urgent care, which would be a lot cheaper? And then when partnering some of the other, by partnering with some of the other vendors we talked about, like TruVerus on the RX side or Amps on the medical side, we can determine if, not only are they over utilizing services they shouldn't be, but then do they pay too much for the services that they did use?
Quick follow-up on that. Do you notify the employee that they may be going to a hospital a block away, just as an example, a block away from another one that would be much less expensive?
Yeah, one thing we can do, and this is, this would really depend on the culture that the district wanted to aspire to. One example of how we could do that, and there are other ways, is we actually have a mobile app that we can attach to people's smartphone, and it will point where the different providers are. And there's some average costs and other data such as that that can say, hey, if you go here, it might cost you $500 for an MRI, or if you go there, it might cost you $2,000, things like that.
Yes, Gallagher's got a healthcare analytics team that can take a deep dive into your claims. Also, we use some third-party vendors, one called Verify, so we can kind of segregate claims that are outliers. I think that's what you're kind of referring to. And also, from a pharmacy standpoint, we have some internal resources that we mentioned earlier. We have also used TruVerus in the past as well.
Would we do the same type of thing and look at your reporting to make certain that we have the proper levels of in-network and your utilization with Blue Cross? It's pretty tough to find a provider that's not in their network. Vermillion uses a different carrier. But to identify those providers that are not in the network and make sure that that information is communicated to your employees. Another thing, too, is that part of the network contracts that you have, when you go to a network facility, they're not supposed to refer you to a non-network provider. That's part of their contract. Network providers refer to other providers within the network. So a lot of it is in the reporting and the communication to your employees. There's also, industry has many decision-making tools out there that we would incorporate into that strategic plan whereby an employee, if, let's say you're having a hip replacement or some type of diagnostic work, you can look at the providers in the network and see what the cost is for that procedure and make good, smart choices. And that's what's going to bring that overall cost of the plan down, because a hip replacement at one facility versus another can be tens of thousands of dollars difference in price.
For emergency situations, it doesn't matter. Sometimes you go to the closest hospital for emergency, and that could be a really big surgery, open-heart or whatever. So there's no difference in the coverage, or how would that work?
So I think probably save the trouble of all, the answer's going to be the same with all three. This is about the carrier and your plan in an emergency situation. That's a new provision.
For Arthur J. Gallagher and Hill, McGriff gave us a tangible number to look at, about, in their presentation, 9%. Just looking at our existing plan and our existing expenditures, they estimated a 9% savings with some implementation, which would save us about $4.5 million. Now, it's hard to hold any of your feet to the fire today with that cost savings, but a year from now, when we reevaluate, I'd like to know from the other vendors, if you've looked at our plan, is there a number out there, percentage-wise, that you think we have out there that we can save today? And if you would commit to that number today so that we can include that in our evaluation?
We were not aware that an analysis of your existing plan was required for this meeting. If you would like us to go back, look at your data, make a recommendation on what we can save, and put a guarantee behind that, we'd be happy to, but that wasn't part of what we were asked to do.
Fair enough.
I would prefer not to make any kind of guarantee in that until we've done the full analysis to find out what your philosophy about your benefits are and develop that strategic plan. We could guarantee a lot, and first thing, only thing you need to do there is cut some benefits and whatnot. You know, it really depends on a lot of input and to take a look at many years of data to really pinpoint what's driven the cost of the plan and to vet all of the possible solutions. You know, that guarantee or the amount you save is a lot of that is depending upon your input of what you're willing to do, and also the programs that we're going to give you to incorporate into the plan.
The question was, had it flown, no changes, value eight, how much savings are with no change? That would have to be something.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would, yes, ma'am.
Who's spent years, decades, dealing with insurance plans one one after the other? This is an extremely important decision. And I asked Mrs. Bernard in the break, had she contacted all the school boards that were clients of all three of the proposals that you've chosen? Because school boards are unique unto themselves for a lot of reasons, and specifically, school boards who are self-funded, school boards. I asked specifically, and she has not contacted all the school boards. That's kind of my concern right now. You're getting ready to vote. Have all board members individually contacted the school boards that are clients of these proposers? Because Ms. Bernard has not. So I guess my question is, what is the rush to do it on a Tuesday night that's not a regular board meeting night to get it done tonight, when Ms. Bernard said it didn't need to be done tonight? It could be done next week.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes, I just want to address you, Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
The great news here, and there's great news, is that Ms. Sonnier has contacted these school boards. And she just reported that all three of these companies come in high regard. And there's no rush. Tonight's meeting was scheduled to choose a consultant, and that's why I'm suggesting we move forward. Thank you.
But my question remains, have all board members had the information, other than what Ms. Sonnier just gave you, about the school boards that are represented by these three? No?
I didn't have all of it. I had some, but not all.
Mr. President, members of the board, I gave you the information tonight, and of course, we had good reports from the school systems I contacted, but I got really glowing reports from one of the companies that deals with self-funded, which is what we're looking at. It's a company that has dealt with self-funded with school boards that will make a difference. And I would like you to take some time to look at the numbers, look at what the premiums are, look at what the school board's paying and what the local employees are paying, what's the total cost of it. And I don't think you've had time to analyze all those numbers, because it takes a while. And I see no reason why you don't postpone to vote on March the 9th. You know, think about it, talk about it. You call because you need to find out. You need to hear. You know, I did this because part of the retired teachers is that we want to protect the insurance for the teachers and the retirees, but also, we want you to be able to contact them and talk to them. Thank you.
And this is similar to a point of order. I just want to say that, you know, the motion to postpone has already been defeated. We're debating something that's not on the floor. If we could stick to...
We have to limit the discussion to the motion, and that's to pick one. So I would ask, and I'm going to vote on this one, because I don't think there'll be, could be a tie on this one, but if it's, if we get down to the top two, I'll abstain so as not to create a tie. So I would like to ask that each of us writes down the name of the one that they think would do the best job for us. would be the, uh, do the best job for us.
I don't know how we're going to...
Dr. Aguilar is going to read out the, the name, school board members' name, the district, and who he or she voted for. If no one gets five, which is a majority of nine, we'll pick the top two and we'll vote again.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Elroy, District 3 votes Hub International. Mr. Santini, District 6 votes Gallagher. Britt Lachey, District 5, votes Hub. Tommy Angel, District 2, votes Hub. District 8, Eric Kinesik, votes Hub International. Jeremy Hidalgo, District 9, votes Arthur Gallagher. Mary Morrison, District 1, votes McGriff. Dawn Morris, District 7, votes Hub.
Somebody has five? Okay, so, the board has chosen Hub International. Is that the only thing on our agenda? This concludes the items on the agenda, so I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned.
Guys, thank you all for coming. I appreciate y'all's time and y'all's energy, okay?